The New Britain Board of Education, providing students with a high-quality education.
Good evening. I am sorry for the delay. The time is now 6:13. We will begin the meeting for the Board of Education for this evening. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Miss Sims, if you would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Caddo, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Chang.
Here.
Mr. Gay. Mr. Mercier.
Here.
Ms. Ruiz.
Here.
Ms. Parker.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Sanders Connolly.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Dr. Sims.
Presenting.
And Ms. Nicole Rodriguez.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Caddo. If we could take a brief moment of meditation and let's keep in our hearts and minds Ms. Parker and her loss, as well as the family of Carol Holt, who is a former staff member here, PSL for the Consolidated District, School District of New Britain. I apologize. I am still trying to run to get here. I had an emergency at my school, so I had to do that before I got here, so I do apologize. But if you would please keep those folks in our hearts while we take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Gosten and Mr. Public to the podium to speak about the students from New Britain High School that assisted at the poll election day.
Maybe we should open them.
Yes, I can get them out there. I think they want to hear their names.
No more silence.
Talk about children.
Okay, you guys can just stand off to the side a little bit. Yeah, Mr. Gosten, Mr. Public.
Some of your voters, students?
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Is this on? I can't tell. My name is Peter Gosten. I'm a Republican Registrar of Voters. I'm here with my counterpart, Lucian Pala, Democrat Registrar of Voters and former mayor, as many of you know. We're here tonight to honor the students who helped us with the most recent election. And I realize the time is short, so I'll just be succinct and say that it was around the end of September. I was looking at a roster, as was Lucian, and noticing quite a few holes from people who could not work the upcoming election. So I turned to Dave Messina and Mike Blenker. We're in the Student Government Program at the high school. We've worked with them before in obtaining students who would help us with the elections. And we had about two or three different types of jobs that needed to be filled, being a federal election. And we brought in a number of students. And I just want to say that it was the weekend before. We had gotten through training about 20 of the students. And the biggest surprise of all is that they all showed up on Election Day. Now, many of you may think that that's not a really big deal, but truly it is. So we have a number of people that work for us all the time, who unfortunately, for one reason or another, can't find their way through polls on Election Day, and we have to scramble to fill their positions. But anyways, the students here did a very, very good job. We have polled all of our moderators and asked them for some feedback, and all those who worked for them at the polls. And each of them got pretty glowing remarks. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Registrar's Office for helping us out and for meeting you. You're very, very fine young men and women. And hopefully, we will get to see a couple of you next year, those of you who do not graduate. Okay? So thank you. We appreciate that. And oh, by the way, those of you who are seniors, please let Mr. Blenker and Mr. Messina know I'm the Treasurer for the Registrar and Voters Association of Connecticut and on the board. And as such, we have now started to give out scholarships, okay, to those we put in the hat. You'll be competing with a number of people around the state, and it's a random draw. But those of you who are seniors, I'd like to know your names, so we can put you in for a possible scholarship. Thank you.
I'm just glad Peter didn't prepare anything, because I think he said it all. But you know, I just want you guys to know one thing. We do get reports from the moderators about a variety of their workers. And they do, are required actually by law to keep a log. And not one of those logs out of 17 polling places said anything except what great, great kids you were, number one, and how bright you were, number two, and how useful you were, number three. And they, not one negative comment, and how quickly you picked up the job. So maybe we've got some future politicians here, so I'm asking you to take a look around. Maybe you can be in these seats one of these days. And thank you for your service. Peter did say it all. It's just, I am proud. I am so proud of you guys, because I feel like every one of you is one of my kids, and you did such a great job for us. We hope to have some of you back. And that's it for me, because Peter didn't cover it. Please do put in for the scholarships. We don't have any influence on the drawing process, but maybe you can make your parents' lives a little easier. All right?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. If you would remain where you are, and if Mr. Messina and Mr. Blenker would please come up and assist us with reading the names and presenting the certificates.
Yeah, why don't you do it over there? We'll just do the sweep. So you guys, just so you know, after, if your name is called, actually, wait till all the names are called, and then we'll just do, we do the handshake all the way around, all the way there. And then we can sort out who gets what later out there. But that's good.
I'm excited to read the names. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do the wedding reception.
Yeah, the wedding reception.
Natalia Wachowski, Natalia Julius.
Not here.
Not here.
We're gonna clap anyway. So Melanie, if you wouldn't mind, just walk this way and start doing your sweep. You've got 10 more.
Yeah, you're seeing. Mr. Soto or Ariana. I'm sorry, Ms. Soto.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Just consider this practice for scholarships.
Crystal. Crystal, great smile.
You sound like any Martinez.
Yay!
Luis Borghes. Vanessa Fazari. Taya Shvalitska.
Everybody have one if the boo is here.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Picture?
Yeah, can we do one picture? Mr. Blenker.
Mr. Blenker. We're gonna do a picture.
Let's organize. We're on the semicircle here.
Get the ladies up front.
Thank you again.
Excuse me, students, before you leave. Mr. Pierce, if you would, if you would like to say anything, if you could come up to the podium, if you'd like to be good.
As you, young ladies and men are leaving, I just, I want to thank Mr. Public and Mr. Gosten just for pointing it out, because it's not always that we point out the positive. And every day, you make so many of us proud of what you do and who you are. And so you represent us well. And so just thank you again. I'm really proud of all of you. Thank you.
Good God, guys. I'm not kidding about that special election.
They want him to take you up to school.
All right. Okay, so I'd like to thank Mr. Salerno and Mr. Spendley for joining us again today. Thank you very much for coming. We do have two pressing matters we have to address that are time-sensitive. So we are going to address 6B, which is authorization to proceed with the move. Authorization to proceed with the movement of NBT, subject to Slade Portables, conversion of plastic portables to district-wide kitchen facility from the Whitsons Group, as well as to a legal settlement that we have to address. So can I take, have a motion to the--
Motion to go into an executive session.
No, we're gonna do this one. A motion for this one.
Motion to authorize the movement of the New Britain Transitional Center, Slade, to the Slade Portables, and the, well, basically, the authorization to proceed.
Right.
Motion to approve the authorization to proceed.
Second.
Okay. Can we have a presentation for Mr. Jeff?
Oh, I think we're going into executive session. Sorry.
No, the next one is executive session, but we're gonna do those two. So I just wanted to give you the two that were coming up.
The reason why we're here this evening is Jeff Taddeo is the Food Service Director with Whitsons. And Whitsons serving a little short of 20,000 meals a day, breakfast and lunches to all of our students in all of the district. None of the kitchens that we have in any of our schools are set up to serve 20,000 meals, 10,000 breakfasts, and 10,000 lunches each day. Jeff has been on the search for a kitchen within the district. We have an opportunity where we can build a kitchen in one of the portables that we have over at Pulaski School. The money that will pay for the construction of the kitchen and the freezer, refrigerator, and dry storage will come out of the fund balance in the cafeteria. One of the restrictions that we have in the fund balance in the cafeteria is that that money cannot be used to build a new structure. We can buy equipment and renovate space within an existing structure. We will be building or purchasing a freezer, a refrigerator, and dry storage, and placing that where the tennis court is located over at Pulaski School. So looking at a quick rendering of this, that we're excited that we are able to build a freezer, refrigerator, and dry storage on top of the tennis courts, which is at Pulaski, and convert the existing 10,000 square foot portable building that is behind Pulaski into a district-wide kitchen. Whitsons trucks will come in here, pick up the breakfast and lunch, and deliver them to all of the schools. This facility will be large enough for us to eventually prepare dinners for all of the students at all of the schools, and also address some other programs that Whitsons is able to bring on. So--
All the reimbursement coming back to New Britain, obviously.
Could I, can I just ask for Mr. Kane to just explain a little bit about the fund, the food fund?
Yeah, we have a cafeteria fund, and I'll follow certain things. And actually, it was a key, you see, P program for the state of Connecticut for New Britain School Districts. All our students receive free lunches in New Britain. What's nice about that is it's very profitable, but the only way you can take those funds is yet to use it for the food service. So over the last several years, we've been building up that fund, and I think there's somewhere, at the end of this fiscal year, I think we believe it's about $5 million. We can only use that for the food service. So the plans right now is actually construct this kitchen and then expand. And then the next plan is really start looking at all our cafeterias and get to the point where we can modernize them, and really bring them more to a, more to a campus, like the college campus type of cafeterias, and really make them attractive. Maybe make it the most attractive room in this school at the end. But this is just the start. We have the funds, and it's done a great job. So every time we bring up, have a free lunch in New Britain, I'm just gonna make up these numbers, but maybe it's $3, and it may cost us $2.20. So that additional 80 cents or 70 cents goes back into the fund. And we have to expend those, because right now, the state's getting back to us and saying, hey, New Britain, you gotta start spending that, or you may start losing it. So it's pretty cool that we can go do this. But like they mentioned, it has been an existing facility, because there was discussion about building a facility, and it actually met with the state, along with Jeff, several times, and really came back, no, we can't do it. So with Nancy's plan with the Transition Center, to bring those students back to, you know, Slade and Lincoln, which is a better setting for them, it actually freed up an area that we can use. And that's really what it is.
Any questions?
Just to provide some additional context, the reason we were able to go, and Mr. Kane can correct me if I'm wrong, we were able to go to the universal lunch program in New Britain was something we did a few years back, several years back. I forget exactly how many now, but as well as on the board. It's because we have such a high population in our city already that qualify for federal free lunch. And because we have that high percentage of that population, you're allowed to do universal free lunch, which is really good, outside of the fact that it ups how many people are taking lunch, and we get these, this extra money to be able to improve our food services. But it also helps remove the stigma some students face with taking free lunch, because now if taking free lunch is not, you know, a sign that your family is struggling or anything else, it's just everyone in the district has access to that. So these funds that are going into this cafeteria fund balance come from the federal and state reimbursements for our lunch program, much of which we would have already been getting due to our high population of free and reduced lunch. There's no local funds. There's none of our state ETS funds that go to this. It's a completely separate entity.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the post. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leon. And this is for which-- Motion to go into executive session to discuss legal settlement, 6B. With Kevin Kane, Nancy-- The attorneys.
And Janice.
It's Attorney Shelley and--
No, it's Attorney Bartlet.
Make sure that we have the correct attorney on the record. Thank you. You look like an attorney, not the one I was expecting, but--
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the post. Okay. Okay, we are now back. We are moving back to the beginning of the agenda. Mr. Caddo, you said there was no one sent up for public participation, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Anyone here who would like to address the board? Last but final time, anyone who would like to address the board? Thank you very, very much. The public participation portion is now closed. We're gonna move to board reports. Are there any board members who would like to give a report?
Yes.
Yes, Miss Conley.
Yes. Looks like we are accepting $12,000 from Downs Construction that can be used in each classroom, which I thought was pretty common. We like to bring in money. $1,000 from the Anna Grace Project, same thing, used in a specific classroom. And then $500 from Chamberlain, its adopted class, where they submit a wish list for supplies. Love to take money. Well, gee, I was actually just looking at, because I think, I want to say it's-- I think it was a grant, but it came across as a bond, so I was confused if it was a bond or a grant.
Perfect.
So I was gonna have to take that off.
Okay.
Unless I find it before we go.
Gotcha. Any other board reports? You watch, as you need to, but we just--
I just want to make a little bit more about the Downs.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you very much. Let's do a presentation for your report, please.
Sure, most of it you can read. I just gave updates on NBU at the elementary level, University of Versi at the secondary level. The one thing I really kind of want to highlight is to Gil's point, was the really generous donation from the Downs Construction Company. And this is through Anna Grace. They reached out to Anna Grace, and they wanted to highlight a teacher or staff member in 12 of our schools that, like an unsung hero, who illustrates a passion toward creating a positive environment, someone who's resilient, they empower families, and they're engaged in all of our students' success. So the $12,000 that was made, it's really kind of exciting. The people don't yet know who they are. The administrators nominated a person on their staff, an unsung hero, and Downs will be in, and we will be actually going into classrooms and coming in with a big Ed McMahon's checks, one of the big sweetest takes, publisher, parent house, whatever. And so there are 12 schools, and you've got the most of the write-up, but there are, there are Love Win Schools, as well as they work with Transition Center and Satellite Career Academy. And then I just have to bring up too, this was an awesome, about a week before Christmas, Nelva Marquez Green, who is founder of Anna Grace, through EverSource, had three of our high school students. We actually chose the social studies department at the high school to choose three deserving students to go see Hamilton and to go to dinner. It was not Capital Grill, it was Hartford Club. Thank you, you remember that. They ended up going to the Hartford Club for dinner and went to see the production of Hamilton. So yeah, with, and the chaperone, one of our teachers, a work parent, actually, one with the kids, and so, we don't have any pictures yet of it, do we? So those were really the two big things. And I just wanted to say, Matt did put up our, our new website design today for our staff. It does, it looks really nice. And so you can kind of go on that. And one last little thing, I know this is an issue every year, but our little ones, our preschoolers, who really can't be in attendance if they haven't had their vaccinations for flu. We don't have any outbreaks yet, but I'm really happy, because 93% of our students are in compliance, really even before we began, which is really good numbers compared to last year. We still haven't, I gave you Friday's numbers, but we're even down below 31 students now. So that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Brad. We are gonna do A for presentations, and then for B, we're gonna bring in some of the busy service animals.
Our service animals?
Okay, so the update on New Britain High School Manufacturing Engineering and--
We found out last minute, Mr. Howie couldn't be here. We wanted to wait until the next. Mr. Howie would like to come and do the presentation.
No problem. All right, whole business. A, can I have a motion to approve the policy 6163-32?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation on that? We cannot bring a peacock. I don't believe a ferret either.
And not my mother's miniature horse.
No.
Miniature horses are technically permissible.
Right, that's what I said, right, miniature horse.
My question is, I understand that the owners of the animal would be responsible for it. So let's say tomorrow that the dog bites somebody. What would be the protocol for that family to do?
It was an administrative request. It would have to go--
I was gonna say, I would assume you have an administrative request that says, hey, you filed a claim--
This is a policy, so we don't.
But I would, look, this is a brand-new policy.
Because the library, we've also been updating our policy, and our assistant director went to a legal seminar on it, and was told, this is not directly answer your question, but if it's truly a service animal, it will not bite, it will not interact with people, it will not do that.
Right, which, which I'm aware of. I'm just looking at those-- seniors, you never know.
If it was antagonized by their child--
If the dog's going wrong or something, you know, what would be the protocol for that family to do, since we're saying that it would be the family's responsibility? What would that, what would I do if I was the owner, which I believe the owner would be the parents, not the child, right? I get called, the dog bit somebody, what would that parent do? Would they call the principal? The principal then, you know, what would be the protocol? And I think that would be an important--
If it happens in the school--
If it were to happen, it's important that we--
The principal should know before the parent knows, probably.
Ms. Jones, you have any comments?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's, the policy calls for a process for them to even bring it in, and the parent is basically signing, you know, full responsibility in that sense, and that's what covers us, because a kid can't just walk in with the animal and say, this is my service animal, hello, everyone. You know, they have to have gone through the admin process. And so that paperwork basically sort of identifies us when the parent does that.
So that if something happens, that that dog bites, that, which, we know it's a service animal, we're just looking at those weird scenarios that you never know, that you never plan on--
But the owner's going to be on the only, be on the owner.
Well, the policy clearly states that the owner is liable. It also has a section where it says that one of the reasons an administrator could exclude a service animal is if the owner, handler is unable to control the animal, and that would clearly qualify. So at that point, the service animal would not be excluded, and, you know, I mean, any damages, the owner would be liable for damage done by the dog. Just like in the case of any damage done to the property, it's also, it says that the handler is responsible for damages to district buildings, property vehicles caused by the animal. It actually says right there, injuries to students, employees, volunteers, or visitors caused by the animal.
So when that picture happens, and when that family signs that--
They know that they are responsible for any damage.
That specific paragraph should be listed on the form that they sign.
And I believe it-- And I believe it was, there was a sample administrative right that went along with it, and it did have...
So at that moment, that school, there's a procedure as to how they're gonna go about handling that situation. There's like a procedure, a protocol as to, all right, you know...
Oh, like, you know, bring the kid to the nurse, call the family, have the child removed, have the dog removed.
That's being clear to them. Now, I have just one more question too, because I know adults that are petrified of animals, any type of animals. And don't get me wrong, I'm for this, because I love service animals, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I know adults that are petrified, there's an animal, if there's a dog in a house, they're not even gonna go in. What if there's a child that is, you know, in a school that is afraid, or how do we prepare other children to get comfortable with the idea of a service animal if they're afraid of, you know?
Again, through you just...
I was gonna bring up the fact that a lot of people are allergic to certain birds and animals and stuff like that, so what do you do about everybody else that if someone has a dog in a building and they're allergic to it, or a cat, whatever, how do you deal with that? Cause that includes the students and teachers, everyone.
Yes.
I mean, again, right in the policy, it says that one of the reasons that it could be excluded from the building is if the presence of the animal significantly disrupts or interferes with the education process.
And that would mean...
That would cover trauma, fears, that would cover allergies. I mean, we are also dealing with, you know, possible accommodations that we are legally bound to make for that student. So, I mean, that's the other thing, we're not talking about, this is not about companion animals or comfort animals, this is about specifically, this is not therapy, this is service animals for students with a recognized disability that we need to accommodate.
And then if it was that building and it needed to be a different building, we would have to then have those accommodations.
And other accommodations.
I'm kinda going back with the liability issue, I know it's in there that the owner of the animal would be responsible, they don't have the insurance, if there was a lawsuit that, at the end of the day, it's gonna be litigation, don't you think? He's kind of asking, I mean, I would think that the parents could go after whoever they can.
They're gonna go after whoever they can, and then your administrative right, in that form that they sign, it would say, you need to have your policy that says you cover this service animal. If you have a service animal, you probably have insurance for that child that has a special need.
Not to say anybody can have a service animal.
They are regulated through the agencies which train them. I could have actually signed my dog up for a certificate, a service dog.
That's different than...
Hundred and thirty bucks it would cost me.
That's different than service animal, that wouldn't qualify for this.
I'm gonna support it, I think it's good.
You can't discriminate against a student who has...
I mean, we kinda don't have a choice, the policy is there, because if a child has it in their IP, we cannot legally deny them. So we have to be proactive in that policy, otherwise, we're gonna be stuck.
Well, you're right, when it comes to signing that paper, it should say, you know what, you have to show proof that you have insurance for this, to handle anything that could happen with the dog. But I mean, service animals, I don't think I've ever heard a story of a service animal actually, but losing it. They are trained like...
They bring them into the highest populated places to make sure that they are not distracted, right, before they're even past their training, right?
I just think that one of the important things is, because a lot of times when we do stuff here, when it gets down to the school, no one tells them how to go about implementing. So if something does happen, what is the procedure? If there's an error with a student, if something happens, who do they report to? There should be some type of procedural thing for, you know...
Well, it should be company with the student, and my understanding is we have a policy now because of a student who requires, I mean, it has not come up.
No, it hasn't come up.
It hasn't come up, so...
Yeah, but it still should be a procedure.
Right, well, show you a procedure that a company is... There are administrative procedures that come right behind the policy, and so it's up for the building administrator to review the policy, and if they have questions, if not, they just follow. That's right.
Well, I was about to say, when we discussed this in policy, we had gone over, this CAPE does have, you know, this is basically off of theirs, they do have a form that they recommend using, and we said we were going to basically use that form if this comes up. So we do already have in place the necessary forms and things that we need parents to sign, and it had sort of the policy of, and we discussed, again, in policy, who it should go to and what the procedure should be for a service animal coming in. And again, it would have to be through a, you know, a PPT, there has to be an IP or a 504 that specifically calls for it, you know, those things are in place. To Mr. Sanders' point, someone could come in to sue us, but you can sue someone over anything.
Very true.
You know, and I think realistically, in this case, you know, right now, we are more exposed than we would be if we had this policy in place, cause upon adopting this policy, we are specifically outlining where the responsibility lies.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discourse? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. Ms. Scott, for the consent agenda, there was something you wanted to do?
I would like to pull off D, approved settlement agreement and release with county and country transportation.
Okay. And any others for the consent agenda, was there anyone else who wanted to pull off something? Okay. See, Doug, they have a motion for D, please.
Motion to approve settlement agreement and release with county and country transportation, second.
All right, discussion?
I don't have much discussion, except I would just like everybody to understand that we are in a financial situation, and if you do business with the district, manage your business as we manage our business, period. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make a comment? I would like to make a comment. I try to hold my comments to a minimum, but I would like to make a comment. Mr. Kane, we thank you for being the go-between and having to answer these questions and being back and forth with the entities of transportation at large, as of late. It is unfortunate, but I feel like we get the short end of the stick as a district because people don't respect what they put in writing, and that saddens me. And I feel like it is unfortunate that people don't follow protocols and have policies in place to do things, and then at the end of the day, they're saying, oh, you forgot something, when in fact, that's not necessarily the case all the time. It's disheartening to me because we don't have enough money to just hand out money to people when they feel like they've been wronged, and not necessarily as an oversight on our behalf. But I do thank you for your diligence with this, because I do believe that the ask was much greater prior to, and so we do thank you for all of the work that you have done thus far. Any other comments?
I think I'd just like to point out for the record that the cost was much higher than what the settlement is, and I think at the end of the day, again, it saddens me as well, and we have to put money out there because, you know, what we're trying to do is look at the cost of litigation, and I think this is what we kind of agreed to, and this is where we're at. So it's, you know, it's either pay now or pay later. I don't think it was a winnable case by any means, and I'll say that for the record. But again, in this day and age, you could sue anybody for anything.
Right, go back and forth.
Anyway, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Any others? Yes, Mr. Mercer?
I'd just like to say, I think this is another good example of why it was important for us to go out to bid on both of our transportation contracts and get much cleaner contract language, so that hopefully going forward, we won't have the ambiguities that lead to these disagreements. So I'm just glad that we've gotten that done, and hopefully we won't have this issue going forward.
Yes, except for what they say. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Aye. Nate?
All set, Matt?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. Motion carries.
Do you wanna do, no, never mind.
All right, I'd like to adjutant motion to approve the superintendent's budget request for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Motion.
Okay. At this time, we would like to call Mr. Kevin Kane and Mrs. Nancy Sarah to present the proposed question for the fiscal year 2019, 2020.
You know, I know many of you are...
It's my favorite time of the year.
Okay, the first several pages is really how the budget book was put together. You'll see the transmittal letter, and if you look at your table of contents, there's a table of contents, there's 37 sections in this budget book. Section one, a general fund appropriation. If you want to stop during the presentation, please just stop me, I can answer questions during the presentation, I can answer questions after the presentation. Section two is the FTE breakdown. Section three is on the funds, that really defines all the funds we have out there. Section four defines the object codes and locations. Section five is your object code budget. Section six is changes from the current budget, so we're looking at what proposed, requested 2019, 2020 budget versus the adopted 2018, 19 budget. Section seven is something we've always done, Roosevelt Campus, and as you all know, Roosevelt Campus is really made up of three different schools, Hell's Academy, the Satellite Career Academy, and also the Early Learning Center. Section eight to 26 is all the schools and special programs. Personnel budget, when you look at personnel budget, for the most part, you're looking at, it's someone's salary, we have employees in the district, if your spouse, if you work in the district and you have a spouse and you opt for no insurance, you receive nothing. If you have a spouse that works in the district, it doesn't work in the district and you opt for no insurance, cause maybe something else in your family covers, you get a thousand dollars. So it's just a thousand dollars and no coverage. Many unions have longevity payments. I know through the superintendent, we've been negotiating that out, and what I mean negotiating that out, it's more of a grandfather clause, so through the administrative contract, and I believe the teachers' union, that's been negotiated out, what it really means is after a certain date, the new hires do not have longevity, but the employees are still sitting there, you know, maybe a year, two years ago, continue to have longevity based on the contract. A number of our employees have contracts, superintendent, myself, others, they make, we have annuities, which really ties back to the administrator's contracts. The administrator's contracts have annuity, and also the contractor employees have annuities too. Car allowance, we have a few employees that have contracts, might receive a hundred fifty dollars a month or something like that as a car allowance to drive to and from the schools. Now, here's just an example of personnel budget, and I picked off Smith School. Within realization this past year, we steamed, we've actually really added positions in, it's just not the steam positions. If you recall, looking at the current budget that was presented to you back in June, you'll see, like, for Smith School, you'll see classroom teachers. What I did after the fact, and that was trying to break it down even further, I actually went back in there and basically, along with personnel payroll, we have actually, now we, your classroom teacher is a kindergarten teacher, classroom teacher is a first grade teacher, so it's a further breakdown. What's nice about this, when I look at the budget book, it actually tells you that you have 39 kindergarten classes versus in the book itself, you can see that, when you look at the FTE, it equals how many first grade classes, you have second grade classes, third grade, so you can actually, it just makes it much easier and cleaner to look at. So we've actually added positions out there. Non-personnel budget, New Britain being a very poor school district in the state, as we all remember, we're 168th out of 169, so we really don't have a lot of money just to throw out there. So we've actually allocated funds to the schools, and you'll see the following page, which will actually show you the allocation factors. We also have, we do receive grant monies, and at times, we have actually used some of that grant money for maybe additional funding to the schools, but through the local budget, and the local budget is really a general fund budget, so we say local budget, but if you're actually in other communities, you're always talking about your general fund budget. One thing about New Britain is, we're different than many other communities, just because being a poor school district, we receive a lot of grants. It's still, we don't receive enough, I mean, when I come down to it, you know, between the grants and the city's appropriation, and the money that flows from ECS and through Alliance Title I, we're still 168th in the state for people of teenagers. So we've actually, so at times, we'll allocate additional funding to the state when we do have additional funds that we look at as the year goes on, and those dues get over to the school. So like, for this year, we have steamed supplies, which is brand new, we actually identify some of our grants to basically help the schools with steamed supplies. Oops, let's see here. One page too far, Matt. Well, you see in the budget book review, I went one page too far, you'll see section 27, which is, which one is it? Section seven to 33 is your departmental budgets. When we talk about the budget budget, if you look at the budget book, you'll see that 901, 902, and 903 are really what do you call the executive part of the budget, that's the board, is budget 901, superintendent is 902, and assistant superintendent is 903. When you go farther, section 28 will be my area, and my area might be a little farther, but it's just the finance, along with transportation, and then we go farther, where I have all department budgets are 27 to 33, and 35 to 36. We skip, section 34 is your district-wide budget, that is a district-wide extra earnings, our district-wide insurance, and non-personnel costs, and we actually look at our grants, and we actually move some of that money over, and you'll see that in district-wide, that gets allocated to section 34. So when you think about our insurances, for like health insurance, what we pay for health insurance, health insurance really has several different funding sources. One is from our general fund budget, so if you look at the budget book, you'll see a number out there, and I don't recall what the number is right now, but I'm just gonna make up a number, you'll see a number out there, 10, 11 million dollars. You'll see at the same time, when you look at that section, you'll see from grants, grants will give another four million dollars. When you look at section 34 for a health insurance budget, you're actually gonna see what the employee contributions are, because when we do our health insurance budget, we actually have a census budget. So as an example, if you look at the teachers, you'll see that we have, you know, 600 teachers that, right, at this time, have health insurance, and we know that 200 are single... We know that 200 are single, 200 are couple, 200 are family, and the calculation is always across, and you see what the employee contribution is. So, and next year's budget right now, snapshot in time, we know that our employees' contribution, I believe, is somewhere about $3.2 million. Part of this budget assumes a 5% increase in health insurance premium, and that's what our consultant gave us right now, it's a snapshot in time. I'm hoping that it lessens as the year goes on, and hoping that it's close to zero. We've actually done very well on our claims on our side, so that's a good thing. So, hopefully by June, that number will be reduced. But then the day, you know, I don't know, it could also go up, because one year here, I was told it was going to have a 5% increase, we have a 15% increase. So, at times, things do happen. Section 37 is per pupil expenditure comparisons, and if you look at that, you're going to see, you're actually going to see section 37 in this presentation anyway, for the most part. Next thing is budget timeline. Somewhere around December 20th, you received this board budget book. I delivered to everybody's houses, I delivered everybody on time. One house I couldn't find, so it was actually the next day, I apologize for that. January 7th is today. And what I'm requesting is the board adopt the budget today and pass on to the city, or if not, we need to have a special meeting on Wednesday, because this budget needs to get to the city by Friday. And, you know, the gentleman that works with Matt, works for Matt, it'll take him Thursday or Friday to do the budget book. Every year, somewhere in February, March, we actually meet with the city quarter finance, that day has not been set, but it probably set within the next couple of weeks. June 2019, the common council adopts the budget. When you think about it for us, we actually really go through a budget process twice. You know, right now, we go through a budget process, which is really a status quo budget, you're seeing today, it's based on, you know, current operations. You know, and I think if you recall a few years ago, with the former superintendent, we actually, you know, went through this whole process of what do we really need? And we need a lot more than we have here, we know that. With the current superintendent, has taken an approach that, you know, right now, we do a status quo budget. We're talking about what changes need to be made, and that's something we'll be working on for the June budget. So, in June, once again, the BOE receives a budget, and in June, the BOE adopts a budget. And there's no dates here yet, so that's why I left them blank. 2019-2020 budget. Just like I mentioned, it's a status quo budget, no changes from current year operations. If there were changes made during this year, from July through December, those changes have already been picked up in the budget, so it's really a status quo from current operations. So, if there's several addition positions that were added, those are part of the budget. The next thing is, we're going to talk a little on per pupil expenditures, and then it's going to be budget analysis. One of the things I just want to point out to you, this is just a really quick and dirty on staffing in this budget book. This is elementary school staffing, core and STEAM. And that's what I'm saying, it really gives you a snapshot in time. You'll, if you look down here, you see how many pre-K teachers you have, you see how many K teachers you have. You have 39 K teachers, first grade 39, 37 second. So, that's what I'm saying, it's really nice now that we're actually breaking down the positions from classroom teachers to kindergarten, first grade, second. It makes it easier to look for. At the same time, it makes it easier internally to get a better idea as to, you know, what do we have? We've had some instances in the past where an administrator may have taken a reading teacher and converted he or she to a classroom teacher. Sometimes it did not make it back to, you know, central offices, and we discovered it later. Processes have been put in place with personnel or talent, let's say, where we're actually, you know, maintaining that much more efficiently. So, those are changes that, you know, it seems simple, but we're a pretty large school district, so it's nice to get a better handle on that, and that's where we are. This is middle and high school staffing, core and STEM. You know, this really gives you the same thing. You'll see this is one sixth grade teacher, that's a Dill Rattle, there's a teacher that is, you know, we didn't really, he or she does more than one thing, so right now, we just classify it as a sixth grade teacher. Most of our teachers at the middle, at the other middle schools, there are English teachers, or social studies teachers, or math teachers. So, you know, we have one that's, she does more than one thing. So, that's why, that's why we have one sixth grade teacher at Dill Rattle. And we actually go down to CTE teachers, which is new, the manufacturing, the culinary, and then just CTE for New Britain High School. Then there are 14 CTE teachers in New Britain High School, they specialize in different fields. The budget in front of you tonight is requested 130, 710, 625. It's an increase of $5,000, $10,006.25, or 3.99%. The next slide really gives you an historic over the last, geez, over the last five years on the current city administration. The base year is the year that administration came into, our budget was 123.2. As you notice, over the last five years, our budget, the third year grew to 125.7, has stayed at 125.7. I can't speak for 1920, but if it stays at 125.7, the overall increase, the cumulative increase over five years is .40%. Now, we're going to talk a little on per pupil expenditures. I think you've seen this before, we had a presentation back in November on per pupil expenditures, so some of these are the same you saw before. They're also in your budget book, in per pupil expenditures. You know, prior to city administration, we were 161st in the state at 12,018. You know, the per pupil dollar increased slightly, but our rank has actually decreased, so our rank went to 162nd. It went up again, our rank is 167th in 1516, in 1617, per pupil expenditure went up again, our rank stayed the same. And now, per pupil expenditure last year fell, $13,059, our rank's 168. It's my opinion, and I might be wrong though, and bet on it, but I would bet on it, we're not going to, we're not going to go to 167th, because the difference between 168 and 167 in the state of Connecticut is about $500, $600 per student. So, I can't see that happening. But, you know, one thing we talked about in November, Danbury is 169th. We have really narrowed the gap between us and Danbury, I believe the gap is somewhere about $160, I think we might have it here, maybe we won't have it here. Pretty confident we're going to be 168, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we couldn't be 169 at the end of this year. And if we don't receive additional funding next year, I would say, you know, we can't go to 170, that's the good part about it. Okay, this is really comparison over the last five years on per pupil expenditure, and it's really showing us in our DIRG comparison. And you'll see Hartford, Wyndham, New Haven, New London, Waterbury, Bridgeport, New Britain. Pretty much, these districts have always ranked this way. There's been a couple swap outs with one, I think one for a year or so. New Britain's always been 7th. You know, our state rank is 168 back in 2013, '14, or 161. The DIRG average last year is $16,416, so the differential in shortfall is $33.6 million. That number has actually grown, so we're really falling behind the DIRG, which is the seven poorest communities in the state of Connecticut, so we're not even competitive with in the DIRG. When we look at the state average, if we go back to 1314, the state average, we're about $22.6 million away. As of last year, we're $39.1, so that number has really increased, it actually really increased a bit time last year. This next slide is just really just showing our historic rank, and, you know, in November, I showed in November that the state went always back in 1999, 2000. I can't seem to find numbers before that. I know they existed, because I've seen them when I used to be in Sinver, they used to keep them, but I don't know where they keep them. This actually came in the state of Connecticut. So, it shows what our current city administration goes, it shows all past administrations. So, we, in 1999, 2000, we were 67th. We, in 2001, 2002, we were 47th, and today, we're 168th. Now, we're going to the budget. This is really just taking comparison and category. So, of course, we know our biggest two categories are probably salaries and fringe and insurances. Our salary increase is $2.8 million, or 3.96%. Our fringe insurance has increased to $1.7 million, or 9.7%. The other categories had some increases, and there were some decreases. The next couple pages, just really budget analysis, it really gives you any change in the budget that are $100,000 more or less. Certified salaries, $2.3 million. $1.5 really represents the contractual increase of 2.9%. There were additional FTEs of 5.4. Unfortunately, there was shifts in the grants, grants weren't able to pick up some employees, because our grant numbers have actually stayed about, they've gone up slightly, but they don't go up enough to keep carrying people. So, if we have employees that are in grants, at times, we need to shift those people back over, or we need to let them go. So, many of these are the teacher salaries that you see right here, so we shift them over, yes.
Do we have a lot of grants expiring this year?
No, you know, most of our grants, to be honest with you, I mean, I always think about our operating grants are the big grants, like the Alliance, that's, you know, that's the $13 million and change, I mean, it's like $13.8 million. And we have Title I, and Title I is somewhere about $5.9 million. But when you look at something like a Title I, you say 5.9. You know, the grant itself actually, I think it's pretty constant, you know, the dollar amount over last year and this year are about the same. But the problem is, if you have the same people in the grant, and they have a 2% or 3% increase, that eats away. At the same time, if people have health insurance, and your health insurance in this year's budget increased by, I believe it was 15% increase in this year's budget, not next year's budget. So, of course, that just eats away at that, so we have them out there sometimes.
Because your grant doesn't increase, your grant is steady, you don't say, oh, your grant increases 2% to cover your contractual application.
Those grants, yeah, so our grants are Alliance, you know, that's the biggest one, we have Title I, we have IDA 611, which is a special ed grant, that actually had an increase by, I think, about $100,000 in the current year, which wasn't anticipated. But I remember last year, we actually had some of our grants that had decreases, you know, when talking about Title I, last year, our Title I grant went down close to $400,000, so it's $5.9 million, it became $5.5 million. When we approved the budget, we assumed we had 5.9, and we found out later, we had 5.5. This year, Title I had a slight increase, but it's not, it's not a huge increase. Non-certified salaries, it's $540,000 increase. 270, let's say 270 is just additional four-point FTEs, nurses, support staff, staff, and behavior support. There is an increase for unsettled contracts. If everybody recalls, we actually, right now, in negotiation with contracts. The settled contracts right now are the teachers, they already settled, Wild Bull, the administrators settled, now we're negotiating with 1186, which is clerical secretary, our maintenance workers, nurses, et cetera. Then we also have the pairs, which is 2407. We also have people that follow the pair of contracts, also 1186 contract, 818 contract just did settle, so that's already built into the budget. So, these are, so for instance, if I know I have employees out there, I'm going to use a pair as an example. I know that we owe, we may owe them money, so I actually look at it very conservatively, and I budget a conservative number. I'm not going to say publicly what I budget, because that'll be something if the board wants to discuss with me, I can discuss issue 101. And there were $60,000 changes. Now, health insurance, we have an increase of $1.9 million. Part of that increase has to be not using reserves. Our reduction in reserves of $1.3 million is an increase of premiums, which is $920,000. And the next thing about it, we had a census reduction. What I mean census reduction, we do have less employees at this point in time that opted for insurance, not a lot, that opted for insurance versus what we had last May or June, that can change. We also have employees that, some of the new hires we've hired, maybe don't have families or a couple, so they've actually replaced some of them, like in a couple family covers for a single coverage. You know, one thing too, I think most of us know, of course, the older ones, we realize that our kids really are covered under our coverage until they're 25, I think, until they turn 26. So, you'll see sometimes a young teacher that he or she may not opt for insurance, because mom and dad have insurance, so why should they be, you know, why should they opt? Because it's 20% out of their pocket, and that's, I would do the same thing. And also, sometimes, somebody has a spouse who may have a richer insurance or a cheaper insurance, and they mingle that out. So, those are things that, you know, with the younger population, at times, you know, you do have shifts, but it can't be the other way. I can come back here in May, June, we do the budget, and the numbers may change, you know, just based on the census. There's a decrease in FICA Medicare retirement contributions of over $100,000. What I actually do is, I actually look at this, and actually, when I look at payroll, I hit the Medicare by what the Medicare should be. So, if everybody knows Medicare is 1.4 or 5%, so if you have salaries of $100 million, you know when you budget Medicare 1.4 or 5%. I did that. I've noticed over the last several years, we've always had a surplus, not because we didn't budget it, we didn't always pay all of those salaries. So, I actually took a Kevin Kane adjustment, and looking back, and said, you know, I feel sick of this adjustment. I did the retirement contributions too, so it might mean a dear year tomorrow, I don't know, it might wake me up. Bus monitors. You know, we know we went out with new contracts with first student specialty. I know with change of the special education, we've actually doubled our monitors on special ed. You know, that was a change that we've done this year, we need to look at that, but we, you know, so even though the contract was very similar with bus monitor prices, we've actually doubled the cost on our special ed monitors. So, that's in the budget, that's $300,000. Rentals, you know, keep our fingers crossed, this is Pope John Paul School. At this point in time, we always pay them $120,000 annually, or $12,000 a month. I'm assuming for next year, we are going to pay in July and August, of course. So, that's where you see a reduction of $96,000. Now, I know Mr. Moore is going to get back to us over the next month or so, there's always a possibility, I mean, you know, hopefully not, but again, he's kind of concerned of that, and he also realizes that we may have come back in and have to keep that school open if things happen. Transportation, we have an increase of $279,000. This is the year two of our contract with first student and specialty. This increase is approximately 2.6%. So, if I look at current budget, and I hit this $279,000, it's about 2.6%. First students increase, just contractual increases, pricing across the board is 2.5%, specialty is 3%, so that's what you're seeing there. And that's it.
In the transportation budget, because I know we admitted, we took a hit when we started having to bus students to Pope John Paul. Because we had an increase in costs, are you, in your budgeting, did you anticipate the reduction?
Not yet.
Okay.
No, I mean, you're correct, I mean, that's something that, you know, Mr. Holic is going to have to, you know, start looking and kind of rebusing, so I have not done that yet, no.
Okay, so there may be some cost savings.
Yeah.
Superintendent, due to the history of flat funding, what happens if we do not get this increase we are requesting of $5 million?
We'll have to make cuts of $5 million, and how do you cut when you're already at the marrow? We've had initial conversations in cabinet around the closing of Howes, which is 1.1 million, Satellite Career Academy, which is 1.4. Looking at preschool busing, eliminating that, doing pay-per-play for both... Doing pay-per-play for both the fine arts, or banned all of our sports programs. That'll get us close to, that's not even five. That gets us to about $4 million. And so when we look at the transportation of our students, we already know it's a hardship for our New Britain high school students to be at the max limit of two miles. We'll have to do that for all of our students, which will mean we're reducing the... And again, we work really hard to bring these students into school every day and to say to a parent of a five-year-old that they have to walk two miles to school with little ones or transport their kids. So we're looking at, it's dire. And then, don't even ask me in the next year if it happens again. Because we're required. I mean, we're going to have to go to class sizes that are enormous. I'm not willing to sacrifice right now. Our current classroom sizes aren't even as low as they should be, given the needs of the population we serve. And the classroom teachers are already working very, very hard, as well as all of our support staff, to maintain. And so for me, looking at a Howls Academy, that's a luxury that we can't afford and that we'll have to provide enrichment within the building. So we are looking to initially close those sites. Mr. Kane, was there anything that I missed in our discussions?
No.
I think I got them. And again, that doesn't even bring me to the $5 million.
I would say thank you for the answer, but the answer is very grim.
Well, we have to, and it's our sad reality
Right.
that we are looking for contractual. And again, I'll argue that our teachers' union, we just had negotiations this past summer, and still, we are the best in terms of the percentage. And that's a terrible thing to have to say.
Right.
That we're the lowest in the state in terms. But that shows you the willingness and the... of our staff. They understand, absolute dedication. And, you know, this is an organization and it's an educational organization, but they also have to put food on the table for their families. And they have multiple degrees and they work hard to be where they're at. And so as a CEO of an organization, it's pretty sad that you have to keep going back and asking. And even still. So that's one. And so it's not the greediness of the employees at the Board of Education at all. There's not greediness there. Right to my salary, to the top, I will stay flat funded until my teachers can get what they need as well. So it's not a matter of greed. They are qualified people who have multiple degrees and have worked very hard to be where they're at. So we have to look at, and while I know that Howls is a flagship school, we can't maintain something like that. And so that will be, that is sadly a sad decision to have to make, but those will be the cuts that we'll make. And again, you know, you think about the sports program and the arts programs that we have. And to say that we're going to have to look to the parents now to fund their sons, daughters, nieces, or nephews, extracurricular activity is going to be barring access for many of our students who can't afford to do that because they are living below. They're at poverty or living, as the Ellis Report states, at a very meager living wage. So it's very important that our city council understand that they cannot continue to flat fund and to sidetrack us and bicker about silly things when we're talking about our kids and making them competitive young men and women in our society who contribute. So.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mercer?
I just want to bring up that I also think it's important to point out that if we go back and look historically, and I just have the figures back to 2014, but I plan on going back forward. In 2014, the amount of City of New Britain taxes that went towards education was about 47% of the taxes. It's now down to 40. We've lost 7% of the taxpayer money going to education. In that same period of time, city taxes, according to the budget books, has gone up by $23 million. The budget last year estimated tax revenues of $131 million. Back in 2014, it was $108 million. Of that $23 million, the city has only increased their appropriation to the Board of Education by 2.5 million. So I'm not saying that, you know, we're not asking for everything. But even if you look at the average increases of $4 to $5 million on average every year that the city has seen in new taxes, if we had gotten even 40% of that or half of that, we would be where we need to be. The city has been paying their expenses, and I understand that the city has their own expenses. And this is a very, very much an oversimplification because there's all sorts of grants that come into it and everything else like that. So I don't want to say that it's really this simple. It isn't. But if we look just at what the taxpayers are paying towards education, they've gone from paying 47% of it to 40% of it. You know, and as a taxpayer and someone who has students or has a student in the system, going to have another one going into the system, you know, it is disheartening to see less and less of my tax dollars going to my children's future and to the future of all of our other students. And I would hope that those numbers are, you know, they speak volumes of where our priorities are. And it's tough because the city doesn't want to make cuts on their side too because they're facing the same hardships. But at least look at what the estimated growth in the grant list is and say, well, geez, some of that should be going to education. You know? And that, I think, is fair. I think that is fair. I think that's proper. I think it's the right thing to do. And I really hope that we can see it. I have advocated for more funding for education since my days on the Board of Finance and It's a huge problem. And yes, we need to get more from the state. And yes, we need to deal with all of the other issues that underfund education, especially in our urban cities. But we also have to take care of our own.
And as taxpayers, Mr. Mercer, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I've got an 85-year-old father who's willing to say, raise the taxes if we know it's going to go towards education. I don't think that there's a family in town that wouldn't say they want what's best for their sons or daughter. And we know education is the economic driver. It is. It is what will make us successful as a city. And as a city, we need to be long-sighted, not short-sighted, and really take a good look. And I will just say, over the last three years being here and with Cabinet, we have worked really hard and thanks to all of your support, ensuring that every dollar we spend is well-spent. And that there's not, we're not lining anyone's pockets with extra money, so to speak, that everyone is willing to not take those increases in pay. But that can only go so far. And it is for the kids. It is for the kids in New Britain. So thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
I'm not sure where to begin. But thank you, Mr. Mercer, because that last bit of information you gave, about the 47% and 40%, is I open. You know, the city seems to always make their contractual obligations and we don't. Three years of flat funding and a little raise, and then three more years of flat funding. And it's just disturbing. And I mentioned earlier, I used to be a critic of the board of managers. We always want to figure out where the money's going. And someone who served on a city council was frustrated because there's not good communication between us and them. And sitting here, for the short period of time I've been here, it's been high work to the needs that we have that we can't meet. The pay-for-play would be the demise of our sports.
I know.
It would be an exodus of parents.
And banned, 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 and the musical and everything.
All that stuff. Closing Howls would just be a flee to magnet schools with more costs.
Last exodus.
And Satellite Career Academy closing. We have seen such an increase in our graduation rate because of the individualization. Our dropout rate would go up. If we closed SCA, our dropout rate would go up.
We've raised taxes in the city, but as Nick pointed out, it has not made it here. And that is mad. And just a couple of questions. I just, I'm looking at your per pupil expenditure here and I just can't understand where Hartford has picked up $500, $600 and we've lost them. My first question would be, why, how did we lose $330 or $325 per pupil? Where was that loss? Was that loss in grants?
I would have to go back and look at the general.
Or is that part of the 7% thing?
No, no. No, actually, when the state does that, there's a computation. They actually, I can go back and find the computation. I've done it before.
I think it would be helpful just to kind of figure out where that is, so maybe we could focus on that, whether, you know, it sounds like it's at the state level. And I just can't see this, these increases in other towns that are getting popped down, $19,000.
Yeah, part of it, if you look at, I mean, if you look at the DIRK, I mean, I don't know about Hartford's population, but our population, you know, has pretty much stayed the same for the student enrollment. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. With these suburban communities out there, you actually do see a decrease in population. Their student population, I was in Sinnsbury years ago, their student population, my kids were just 500. Today, it's probably like 4,000 or 4,000. So, you know, so you think, and actually, they get a budget increase. The wealthier communities, even the boroughs, they actually get their 2% or 3%. But at the same time, they're actually having a decrease in the student enrollment by a percent, 2%, 3%. So at the end of the day, they're seeing a 5%, 6% increase while maybe our enrollment stays the same. Even if our enrollment dips slightly, you know, it's a, you know, 0.05% increase, but of course, you know, the cost of living is up too.
Right, right. I know New Britain faces a couple of problems, and one of those problems is that we're land for. Our taxable property is, we get 50% of our taxable property here. It doesn't solve it like a lot because it's a big number, items like CCSU and hospitals and things like that. But that goes back on the state level, where the state's not giving us the pilot money. So I think that we have to focus on multiple levels as a board and reach out to our city council, our mayor. I know our state representative Bobby Sanchez is just, I believe, is the chairman of the education committee. So I think, besides, you know, moving this to the next level tonight, I think we need to make a collaborative effort to, as a board, to reach out to these people, maybe have Bobby come here and explain to us how these things are working. Because we are in tough shape. And if any of these possible scenarios were to come to fruition that you mentioned tonight, it would be detrimental to the city. So I'm going to stop there because I'm just, I'm really frustrated and I'm angry at it. And these numbers really are disturbing and we should all be concerned.
I just wanted to say that, I mean, I think there are, our representatives at the state level are working very hard and trying to get money to New Britain. But if they're going to get money here and it's not coming to the Board of Ed, then we're going to be in the same position. Because whether we get money, for some reason, it doesn't come directly to us. It goes through into the general fund and then we can't get them to give us increases. So somehow, that's been a flaw that's been there since I've lived in New Britain. And I don't know how we can make it different because it doesn't seem to be getting through to the peoples that were elected to represent us.
And if I might, I know when I spoke last year, Mr. Kane and I went to the LOV and we spoke to Mr. Turzik, Senator Gerantana, Bobby Sanchez. And their frustration is, well, right, we are the seventh highest-paid district in the state in terms of the money they give us directly.
Wait, are we fifth?
Are we fifth?
We're seventh district, we're fifth.
And their point is, your city, we're giving you, we're giving you more than what your city is giving you. And our frustration is, we understand your frustration, but it doesn't matter. Someone has to give the children of New Britain more dollars. Someone. And I think you're right. And I think that we have to help mobilize our families and get them, not here, not to the Board of Ed when we pass the budget finally.
We need to talk.
But next door to city council. We need to get our families to come to city council to express their concern that with flat funding comes major cuts this year to programs that our kids need for whole child development.
Things we've been able to stave off for two or three years, but we just can't stave them off any longer.
Right, there's nowhere else to cut.
Nancy hit on a bit of my point, but I was going to say, I don't know the exact figures, but I remember and I know that you presented very well last year, that of course, the state should give us more because that's our need. But this $13,000 and change, which has dropped, includes all our funding sources. It does include the state, the grants, whatever. So we can't assume that the shortfall is with the state. We actually can pretty much pinpoint that it's with the city. Because the state actually does fund us when you compare all the other places. They're good to New Britain. They're pretty good to New Britain.
That's correct.
And our representatives have fought for that. And, you know, like Nick pointed out, the numbers from the city are very clear. An increase in $23 million in taxes and not having any of it trickle down to education.
2.5.
2.5 has been our increase.
Yeah, that, of the 23.
Of the 23 million.
Of the 23, 2.5 has come.
Right, right, right. Yes, you're right.
It's still something.
You know what?
They got nothing, yes.
Yes, yes, okay. All right, a couple of pennies rolled over in this direction. But you get the idea. I think that we can't lose sight of the fact that you really can pinpoint the city's enormous shortfall when it comes to us. And let's be real, that we get accused of being greedy and such. And, you know, the City of New Britain's kids are all of ours. And if we don't pay for what they need now, we're going to pay in the long run. It's homelessness and joblessness and crime rates, in family exodus because our school system is not what anybody wants, and so on and so forth. So it's really just, you know, that much, much bigger picture that has to be considered.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Kane. All those in favor of submitting the budget? Submitting the budget, right? We tried to adopt it, but we can't. Submitting the budget to the cabinet council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Point of clarification is actually to the Board of Finance.
Board of Finance and the mayor's office and then two, yes. So all those in favor of submitting it to the Board of Finance and the mayor's office, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Motion to accept submission of the Board of Education capital approval projects for 2019, 2020.
Second.
Discussion. Whoa, lights.
Nope. Watch your eyes.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Keep going.
Motion to go into executive session for item 60, discussion and possible action on administrator contract.
Motion. Did we do E and F?
E and F.
Yes, we did that.
Okay, okay.
So the only thing we have left is that. All those in favors, in executive session would be Mr. Kane? All those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? Perfect, we are going into executive session.